Like the polls being ordered to comply.
Mr. Wilson, here. Mr. Johnson, here. Mr. Johnson, here. Mr. Dean Ockes, this is Miller.
Here.
Mr. Handler.
There.
Mr. Cecil Rager.
Here.
Mr. Cassio.
Yeah.
Mr. Pinesi.
Here.
In accordance with the terms of this on short law, adequate notice of this meeting was posted in all school buildings, the administration building, the borough clerk's office, public block, where it ignored newspapers and attack info on January fifth, 2023. Please be advised there is no smoking on school grounds inside or outside at any time. Please silence all electronic devices and pursuant to district policy number zero one six seven. Each statement made by our participants shall be limited to three minutes duration and no participant may speak when wanted.
Thank you. Jet, the additions are deletions. Sing non, comments were public on those resolutions. Okay, sing non. There's another part of it that's superintendent's here.
Thank you, Mr. Pinesi. We're going to start the report today with our student representative report. Sarah, when you're ready.
Good evening, everyone, and happy January. I'm going to share some of the events that South Plainfield has been implementing throughout the month of mid-December into present day January. Beginning with the literary magazine club, they've posted a school-wide tiger tail contest that invites all of the students to think creatively. Students can enter poems, short stories, and artwork to be selected for cash prizes and to be a published author or artist in the Tiger magazine. This contest has over a hundred submissions already and is welcoming unique pieces until the end of this month. Secondly, the South Plainfield Tiger athletics have been achieving amazing things throughout this month. The competition cheerleading team has earned their spot in the national competition in Florida. The boys' basketball team were crowned champions of the Anthony Cotoya Memorial Tournament over the winter break with a seventy-six to sixty-six win over Scotch Plains in the final round. Additionally, the Tiger bowling team won their title division championship. And the boys' track relay earned their GMC divisional title as well. The Tiger wrestling team hosted the annual Marisa Tufaro Foundation match against Old Bridge. The gym was packed with community members who donated and helped bring awareness to this amazing cause. And lastly, I would like to let recognize Eva Otto Moreno for being the first female in South Plainfield history to win the GMC County Championship. And she did so in style with a pin in the final match. The South Plainfield athletics have been shining their way into this new year, and we only expect to see more growth and success in the future. Additionally, the Tiger Broadcasting Club is hosting another movie night showing Disney's Frozen this Friday at six thirty PM. More so during each English class this week, a speaker from the Wellspring organization held an assembly discussing the reality of vaping. Every student in the school had the opportunity to learn about addiction, substance abuse, and the negative effects of smoking and e-cigarettes. This assembly was a great resource for all the students in the school to further our understanding of the detrimental outcomes of vaping. And lastly, I would like to congratulate Angie Mina Rizal and Deep Patel for earning the Rotary Student of the Month award. Thank you.
Sarah, great job. I'm going to ask Mrs. Kaluji, principal of Franklin School, to the podium. We had a little hiatus last month for December when we had the opportunity to hear our chorus and band play for us during our board meeting. But we're back on track and we're bringing to the public all the wonderful events that are happening in our school. And this month, we're spotlighting Franklin School. Mrs. Kaluji.
Thank you, Dr. Tansy. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Franklin School, I'm here tonight to share the video of some of our events and activities that we've been doing. Random acts of kindness, rats, school-wide kindness buddy, and our winter fundraiser are featured in tonight's presentation. A special thank you goes out to the Tufaro Foundation for once again partnering with us so that our fundraising efforts could reach a larger group of people. The students were challenged to raise two hundred dollars and would earn a snowball fight, and they certainly exceeded their goal. I'm very proud of the Franklin School community, the students, faculty, and staff, along with the families truly put their hearts into making our school a warm and friendly place to bathe. And they do not hesitate to give of themselves. You'll see a theme across all our endeavors, kindness. Please note, it's not cold to be kind, it's snow cold. Thank you for the opportunity to share a snapshot of Franklin School's happening.
This million dollar reward should reach our total of three hundred and ten dollars. The money was invested to fund our foundation. It was called because it's been a straight money and it's due to help the veterans and youth in that field. The money went to kids that go to the hospital.
Why do you think it is important for Franklin School to help others?
Because it is important to be kind and show kindness. Well, you can't.
How do you think those that gave our support felt? Okay, thank you. My second question is, how does it make you feel to know we brighten up the holidays for others? One minute, sir. I have one question for you. I'd like you to pretend that you are in charge of this project. How would you suggest we make it better for next year?
Maybe next year, we can let all students participate in the program.
What are some other ideas we can use to raise money to help others in the year? Can you tell us more about that idea?
That's all. Thank you, that was great. I felt like I was about to watch a feature film today with the opening. Mrs. Kaluji, if you wouldn't mind.
Oh, you want me to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, I have my notes. I was thinking like this.
Mrs. Kaluji called me last week and she asked if it was possible to acknowledge one of the amazing staff members that we have working in our school and specifically at Franklin for one of the heroic acts that she had done. So I'm going to pass the mic over to you.
All right. Dr. Tansy, I would like to commend Mrs. Mary Ann Burns of Franklin Duty Aid for performing the hindless maneuver during her regular daily duties. Please accept the following on behalf of Franklin School. I would like to recognize Mrs. Mary Ann Burns for her heroic efforts in saving one of our fourth grade students from choking during lunch on Tuesday, December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. While the student was eating lunch, they began choking on a piece of food. Mrs. Burns, a lunchroom duty, immediately reacted to the student's distress and performed the hindle maneuver. Mrs. Burns' quick action dislodged a piece of bagel and her gentle, level-headed demeanor kept the student calm during this stressful situation. Once the student could talk, Mrs. Burns guided them to the main office. The student was visibly shaken and upset by the incident. However, it was comforting to know a tragic outcome was avoided because of Mrs. Burns' professional response. Franklin School is very proud of Miss Mary Ann and commends her for her lifesaving actions. Thank you.
We have amazing people working here in our district.
Dr. Tansy, can I just, you know, Mrs. Kaluji, that was fantastic, the snowball fight. And if you do it again, like there's, I think there's something that you could do to make it super fantastic. And I think the superintendent and the assistant superintendent would want to get down there, get to the, get to Franklin kids. I'm just saying, I mean, I think that would really make it special for the kids.
I'm in.
If they did, they throw snowballs at you guys.
I am in. I would even wear a snowsuit if you want me. I would definitely do that.
You're the most unafraid person in this world.
Know that.
I'm a close second.
Ms. Zerka, would you mind moving up to the podium? This evening, we are also going to be acknowledging all our absolutely amazing athletes, our fall athletes. So as, as our athletic director, Sammy Zerka goes through, goes through the list, you'll be amazed to hear all of the wonderful accomplishments that we have. If you don't mind, I'm going to stand up for next year.
Please do, doc. I just want to thank Dr. Tansy, Ms. Maleska, district administration, our Board of Ed, Mr. Fusco for all of his support on a daily basis. Mrs. Roblesky for keeping everything in line for me. And now for our coaches, our student athletes, our parents, and the rest of the community here in South Plainfield for all of your support. Because without that support, we wouldn't have over a hundred and thirty honors to our student athletes for the fall. Ninety-one fall athletes receiving division, county, and state honors, three teams winning divisions, one team a sportsmanship award, and three coaches of the year. So, without further ado, if the students aren't here, we're just going to keep on moving. So Zach Coletta, football, United Silver Division Champion, first team all-division, BCC honorable mention defense, Middlesex County second-team defense. Adam Bowles, now you can golf clap and then we can do a big round of applause at the end. So little golf claps just to keep it moving because there is a lot.
Are the students going to stand if they're here when your name is called?
Yeah, if you're here, please stand, come up and get your certificate so that we know that you're here. Adam Bowles, division champion, first team all-division, United Silver Division Player of the Year, All-State Group Three Defense First Team, BCC Third Team Defense, Middlesex County Second Team Defense. Jason Greer, division champion, first team all-division, All-State Group Three Defense Second Team, BCC Third Team Defense, Middlesex County Second Team Defense. Michael Green, division champion, first team all-division, BCC Second Team Defense, Middlesex County First Team Defense. Mark Molinaro, division champion, first team all-division, All-State Group Three Defense Third Team. Joseph Tipford Maroney, division champion, first team all-division, Middlesex County Honorable Mention. Vin Nuyen, division champion, first team all-division, Middlesex County Second Team Offense. Patrick Smith, United Silver Division Champion, first team all-division, BCC Third Team Offense, Middlesex County First Team Offense. Robbie Correio, division champion, second team all-division, Middlesex County Honorable Mention. A.J. Peralis, division champion, second team all-division, Middlesex County Honorable Mention. Joshua Toka, division champion, second team all-defense, Middlesex County Honorable Mention. And now just the rest of the athletes that were on the division champion team. Dominic Massaro, James Adams, Aquesi Afraid, Nathaniel Arias, Ryan Balance, Evan Brown, Damian Capra Fasano. Come on up, Damian, I saw you up here.
Congratulations, sweetie.
Yep. Tyson Cruda, Kaylin Diakon, Lorenzo Vascoletti. A lot of these kiddos are at other sports and other practices, so that's why they're not here. Plus, this is the first one that we've had in person since before the COVID. So we're still working on getting everybody back here in person. Jack Jones, Hezekiah Lamond, Joseph Mangiovi, Kyle Nuyen, Kyle Herr, Jaden Ramra, Ryan Risk, Marcus Saffold, Emmanuel Torres, Christopher Gortran, Zachary Gortran, Isaiah Gonzalez, Justin Hannan, Nolan Hook. Thank you, sweetie. Nolan Hook, Emmanuel White, Adonis Espuit, Raymond Francino, Anthony Malina, Tariq Williams, Coach Jeremy Nurburger, Coach Tom Risk, Coach Nick DeLucia, Coach Adams Asaka, Coach Christopher Girardi, Coach Scott Dickerson, Coach Keith Kapanos, Coach Shane Raymond, Coach Brian Holt, and before the head coach comes up here, our football team was not just winning the division. It was winning the division for the first time since nineteen sixty-five. They were the United Silver Division Team of the Year. They were mycentraljersey.com ranked number six in Middlesex County. They were NJ.com's number fourteen team in the BCC, and the BCC is huge. And our own head coach, Mr. William Hamilton, was the United Silver Division Coach of the Year voted on by NJ.com. If you guys can go shake hands, we'll hold the next kid.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Okay, so our volleyball team won the GMC Sportsmanship Award. And there's such a big push for sportsmanship throughout the state of New Jersey and in all of our sports. We couldn't be any more proud. So we're going to call them up one by one. Trinise Mester, Rika Stiglich, Madison Solanci, Sydney LaLullen, Eliana Diaz, Jamina Valley, Lauren DeCastro, Kia Desai, Caleb Corrales, Kathy Tran.
Congratulations.
Cassie O'Shaughnessy, Kamora Lee Simmons, Natalie Rivera, Ruchi Desai, Angelina Walker, Sarah Jadala, Ava Fells, and coaches volunteer Sean Ferguson, Coach Amanda DiMatio, and Head Coach John Ferguson.
Congratulations. Go ahead. Congratulations.
Our fall cheer, our fall cheer team won big this year with their first ever division win in their competition. They scored so high that they didn't just win technically their small division, but their score carried them up. But if there was a combined division, they would have won the whole thing. So a big congratulations to our fall cheer team for winning the white division. So Melissa Leon Tamara, Madeline Pfeiffer,
Congratulations.
Alexandra Sacco, Peyton Moniz D'Souza, Harley Larson. Maria Calanan, Shani Rose O'Flaherty, Kira Kalaric, Allison Lazo, Emma Benowitz.
Congratulations.
Isabella Leon Tamara, Karen Vaskowitz, Erin Valdez, Juliana Gordeo.
Congratulations, sweetie.
Giovanna Morgieri, and our Tiger Jake Maholski. Volunteer Coach Caitlin Vaskowitz, Volunteer Coach Kim Vaskowitz, Volunteer Coach Mackenzie Larson, Assistant Coach Andrea Sigler, and Head Coach Georgia Ann Larson.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Okay, so now our next sports team has a lot of accolades. Three girls, a lot of accolades. We have senior Giovanna Fabria for first team all-GMC Conference for field hockey and first team all-red division for field hockey. Come on up, dear. Emily Davis, who's playing in the girls' basketball game right now, for field hockey, first team all-GMC Conference, first team all-red division, second team all-North Jersey. Juliana Donaruma, first team all-GMC Conference for field hockey, first team all-red division, second team all-North Jersey. And Coach Melissa Zerwick was named the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three GMC Red Division Coach of the Year. Moving on, we have our girls' cross-country team. We had three girls named to all-division coached by amazing Coach Stephen Bowser. So come on up, Ashlyn Lehman, who I know is twittering right now, Gianna Penya. And Samantha Mensch, who is in the girls' basketball game right now as well. So Mr. Bowser, if you could come up and receive these for the girls. All right, our next team up is going to be our boys' cross-country team. We had a lot of amazing things go on with this one. They were division champions. Mike Capazola became the Division Coach of the Year upon his retirement after forty-plus years within this district. Logan Bedeman, all-conference, beat the school record set by Yalen Johnson with a time of sixteen-twenty back in two thousand and three. The new school record is now sixteen-twelve in two thousand and twenty-two. So let's bring up Frankie Pallett, Kyle Ortiz, Pablo Maraquin, James Capenkiris, Timothy Prisk, Logan Bedeman, and Mike Capazola. Round of applause. All right. Now for gymnastics, coached by our amazing coach Alyssa Wessel. We have gymnastics twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, all-GMC Conference, Amaya Rose Ransom. Moving on, boys' soccer had an amazing season. They finished up state section finals here in South Plainfield, and boy, what a day that was. So this whole season, we've had a lot of standout players, but none better than these four. Rohan Castilla, all-blue divisions, all-greater Middlesex Conference, and all-state. Jason Garwood, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, all-blue division and all-state. Brian Zamia, all-blue division. And Carlos Padona Sellar, all-blue division. Phil Young, who is here, so come on up, Coach. And Coach Felio, who is here, so come on up, Coach. And last but not least is girls' soccer, 2022-2023 All-White Division, Genesis Garces Gomez. We'll ask these coaches if you guys can just step over to the side for a nice picture.
Ms. Zerka? Yes. Did you want to announce the other two girls that came in late?
Yes.
For the game.
Well, right in your perfect time for the picture, we have star runner Samantha Mensch, here is our field hockey winner Emily Davis.
That's a lot of ink, really. We have amazing athletes.
Yes, we do.
And the final presentation during the superintendent's report tonight is from Ms. Moleska, who's going to report on the student safety data, the report from period one of 2022 through 2023.
Thank you, Dr. Tanzi. This is a report that we need to read out to the public. We go through our data monthly, so that we're intentional attacking the student body and attending all our schools, but only this two times each year. So I'm going to read aloud, school, the number of kids, how many is confirmed, the type, meaning what type of distinguishing characteristic, and who investigated. The high school had 11 kids. One was confirmed for race or religion, two were confirmed for ancestry or origin, one was confirmed for sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, one being investigated by Lisa Campoli, and the others by John Discollo. In the middle school, five kids, two were confirmed, one ancestry and race, one was for another distinguishing characteristic, investigated by Stephanie Segura. Grand school had seven. One was confirmed for race, two for gender identity and expression, one for other distinguishing characteristics, all investigated by Jared Straymore. Franklin School had six, two were confirmed for race or color, two were confirmed for gender identity and expression, investigated by Romita Wu. Kennedy School had one, zero were confirmed, investigated by Melissa Zerewiki. Bryant School had one, confirmed zero, investigated by Carly Ashnall Pajason. Roosevelt had three, zero were confirmed, they were investigated by Magdalene Slemin. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moleska, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Moving on to the agenda, I have a motion on curricular A through E. Second. Any discussion? Vote, please.
Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Farinella?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Public policy, can I have approval, first reading?
No move.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing on the vote, please.
Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Farinella?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Personnel, A through E, please.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Farinella?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Mr. Finisi?
Yes. Personnel, A through E, please.
No move. Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Farinella?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Mr. Finisi? Yes. Public comments, any item? Seeing on the board member comments? Go ahead.
I just want to again congratulate Mrs. Calucci and Franklin School. I mean, what's going on over there is like super fantastic. It's really, really cool, and you know, watching the kids, you know, do all that fun stuff, talk about kindness, and you know, how important that is to society now. I just think that that is fantastic, and I really hope that the suggestion of getting Dr. Tanzi and Mrs. Moleska there, which here just helped. Actually, maybe, actually, in the spring, you might want to do something else in the spring, make it a mudball fight, and you know, that might be.
And I'm challenging you.
Right. All right, so, and I also want to congratulate Mrs. Burns over at Franklin School. That was, you know, just super fantastic, that, you know, something like that. So that's a, congratulations to all athletes.
I just want to say thank you to Mrs. Calucci, all of the staff and faculty at Franklin School. That video that we saw today was amazing. We have amazing things going on in not just Franklin, but all of our schools. And then I wanted to take a moment to address the student athletes. Mrs. Zerka provided us with 130 honors for our fall athletes. That's an incredible number, three coaches of the year. That's incredible. I just wanted to say, we have new records being sent, being set, we have coaches dedicating 40-plus years to our community. Thank you to the parents, teachers, coaches, fans, everyone. None of this would be possible without your support and the support of our community. Thank you.
Congrats to all the student athletes and coaches that were recognized tonight, they're proud representatives of our school, on the fields and the courts, as well as in the classroom. And in regards to Franklin School activities, that's wonderful, the way they coordinate around the theme and raise the funds for people in need and all that, but also watch these kids, it's like up to our school district, and I'm sure you guys see more great things from that. Thank you.
Sure. I want to say thank you to Sarah for your informative high school update. We always love to hear what's going on here. Great job, Franklin School students, and Shani Calucci for all your acts of kindness. Thank you to Mary Ann Burns for her brave act. You know, not everybody would have jumped in to help, so, you know, congratulations to her, and thank you so much. Congratulations to all the coaches and athletes on such a successful season. Our athletes are just, and coaches are just tremendous. And I want to wish Patty Porzio and Jane Bishop a healthy, enjoyable, fun retirement, and I want to thank them both for all they've done throughout their extensive careers to educate and mentor the children of South Plainfield. And I just have another note about Patty Porzio. She gave so many South Plainfield students their first experience into the fascinating world of forensic science. Many of her students pursued careers in forensics because of her classes, and no one will ever forget her crime scene investigations, they were epic, and you could see the heightened excitement around the high school as her students and staff alike tried to solve the crime. She herself was a forensic scientist before becoming a teacher. She will be missed, and her shoes will be very, very hard to fill.
That's a problem going less. But congratulations to all the athletes. Thank you, Mrs. Calucci, for the presentation, that was fantastic, saves everything, the athletes. Ms. Zerka, for, you know, the performance that might compare, and it was nice to see those athletes back here again, and a lot of times, the problem with getting them here is usually on a quarter or baseball field while we're having our meeting and playing a different score, and that's what happens. But it's just great seeing all, everybody participate in all the athletes. The film that we saw today was fantastic, you know, I go for, I would even show up to throw some snowballs, but I think we'll bring the real snowballs in, you know? But it was a great night. I know Mrs. Zerka also mentioned about the competition, she just started the season, but I believe they won their last two major competition passes in secondary weeks that earned that bid to her land, and I think it carries up to $2,800, kind of grant the vote with it, so congratulations to them, they're doing a great job, and their season's just started.
And they're working on a fundraiser.
And they're working hard. They're trying to work, they're working a lot of fundraisers, I've seen. They're trying to get there. So it's just awesome what everybody's doing in every area, athletics, arts, and academics, and I just want to congratulate, a little stamp for everybody who does them every day. So thank you with that. On that note, we need to go into executive session. Just let the public know, it'll be probably, it's about 20 minutes, and there might, there will be action, some action, there will be action taken at the end of the executive session. So this all pursuant to the open public voting act, that the board meets in closed session. At this time, the sub-competition matter pertaining to student matters, personnel and attorney-client privileges, do you have a motion to exec?
No move. Second.
Second, roll paper.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to do that. We're going to go to the pass. Okay, so we'll call the pass order, and roll call.
Mr. Boat?
Here.
Mr. Chapman?
Here.
Mr. Farinella?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Pender?
Here.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Here.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Mr. Finisi?
Yes, can I have a motion adjourned?
No move.
Second.
Roll paper?
Aye.
Adjourned, thank you.